This meeting is not called order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Hey, Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. McGurven.
Here.
Ms. Witchy.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Person.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move we excuse the absent council member.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that council excuse council member Pavoni. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, first item on the agenda this evening is a special presentation from the Seattle Public Utilities Project. Welcome. Yeah, that, you can actually, either place that's comfortable for you, you're welcome to use.
Thank you. Is this on? Oh, okay.
Yep, you're, you're live.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to be able to present, uh, our projects from Seattle Public Utilities. My name's Fernando Platina, I'm the project manager for this project, and this is Dylan King, she's a communication specialist with SPU. The project we're talking about is a Cathodic Protection Program 2017 project. It's a bi-annual program that the city has to protect its major infrastructure by installing and/or replacing, uh, certain elements of a cathodic protection or what they call a CP system, uh, for our transmission mains. And this happens about every two years, it's been the average. The project I'm gonna talk about today is the 2017 package. Uh, there is a 2019 package just for future notification that will be coming at some point later. Um, so, I'm here to give you a brief description of the project, let you know about the outreach that we've performed in terms of reaching out to the residents as well as working with, uh, your city departments, uh, as well as to answer any other questions you can ha- you may have about the project. So, next week, um, our contractor will begin installing and/or replacing certain elements of the cathodic protection system along, uh, Beacon Way South in Renton, uh, from, basically from Cedar to about, uh, Philip Arnold Park.
So, essentially Renton Hill.
Yes, yes, correct. And, uh, the, we'll be installing this along our, uh, what's known, our three, uh, large water transmission mains, and that's, it's gonna fill a gap in between two existing systems, so we have, um, two cathodic protection systems with a gap. This will fill the gap in and make it contiguous, as well as replacing some of the existing ones on the south side that have expired their lifespan. So, uh, basically cathodic protection, if, just generally, is, is a, is a type of system that basically, uh, minimizes and/or eliminates the potential for corrosion to occur on metal. And by installing these, we actually prolo- we anticipate prolonging our, uh, the life of our infrastructure in those locations. So, in this case, the three, uh, transmission mains in Beacon Way South, which are two sixty-six inch diameter, uh, transmission mains and a fifty-two inch. So, um, and what these systems do once installed, they'll, uh, they'll, um, prolong the lifespan of the infrastructure that's there, as well as, um, minimize the need for replacing large sections of pipe. Now, you can imagine the size pipe, if you had to excavate those, it would be, would create quite a disturbance in the community. So, our goal is to have those pipes remain in the, in the ground in a good condition for years and years, and these systems that we're putting in, they'll last between thirty to forty years.
Is that long enough done?
That's long enough.
Yeah, okay.
It fairness to you and the public, I live on Renton Hills, so...
Oh, okay.
I'm well aware of what you're talking about.
Okay, okay, great. So, uh, in terms of construction for the, for this project, um, we're looking at about a range between four to six weeks. The contractor's gonna work in smaller packages of one to two week increments, so he's not gonna completely open everything up for, and leave it like that for four or six weeks. He's gonna, he's gonna work in pieces along that route. Basically, the work will involve, uh, installing about a thousand feet of cable, anode cable, in a shallow, in a shallow trench, and then that'll connect the two ends of the existing cables, and then also installing about forty what's known as, uh, anodes, cast iron anodes with, uh, a coke type of chemical wrapping around it. And it's these anodes that will corrode instead of the pipeline, okay? And they're, they're, depending on the location and the design, they could be about fifty feet apart or a hundred feet apart, but we're generally looking for this whole alignment about thirty-nine anodes installed. And they install to about a depth of about sixteen to twenty feet, so, um, with one anode system, one anode being a little bit deeper, about fifty feet. So, as with all construction, you're gonna, you know, residents probably are gonna anticipate a little bit more dust, noise, uh, debris, uh, some vibrations. And then, uh, in order for the contractor to do the work in the locations when they're there, they will have to, we will have to divert traffic and/or parking temporarily while the work is being performed. But most of this is just drilling down, focused drilling, and/or if it's, if, if they're trenching in the cable, there's, it's gonna be a very shallow, very narrow trench, and they should be able to, they've been directed to cover it up so as to not to leave it open, so... Um, so, here's the, here's the important one. So, in, in advance of the construction mobilization taking place next week, uh, Dylan and I have been performing outreach to the community, and, uh, we've gotten some feedback from your departments as well that we appreciate, and working with, uh, the Renton School District. And we've worked with your community economic development, public works, and Parks and Trails groups, I'd like to thank them very much for great coordination. Uh, we've reached out to the Renton Public School District in terms of busing in front of Philip Arnold Park.
Uh-huh.
And we've coordinated times, and, uh, we've coordinated with our contractor to minimize, uh, you know, impacts during those drop-off and pickup times. And, uh, they're, you know, so we're, we're actively trying to, uh, work around that. In January, Dylan and I walked the entire alignment, and we handed out and met with residents, uh, explained to them in person what the project entailed, where they may be affected. They weren't around, we hung a, a flyer, as well as reaching out and, uh, mailing early notifications to them, listening to their concerns. Um, and then a final, uh, construction notification has been mailed with the schedule and the, a reminder of the impacts that could occur again, so, so that's where we're at right now.
Okay, well, thank you. Any questions from council?
Oh, you, no, you can't buy, get by me. I guess, I just wanna express the, the concern, I think, of the neighbors and myself, is, as you, as you're well aware, the city's doing construction down on Cedar Street already. So, the only emerging, emergency access during the day, a lot of times, is up Renton Avenue. And I don't know if you're, if you're gonna start trenching Renton Avenue across that, uh, you know, you can need to be sure that you coordinate that with the city so that they're, so Cedar Street is open.
Yeah, we've, I, I've coordinated, one of your, the project end manager for that project specifically has reached out. I've provided him our construction schedule that we know as, as, as up to date, and he's responded back and letting us know that it shouldn't be an issue with court, with overlap or, or causing any issues that we'll be able to work together to keep out of each other's way.
That's great, we appreciate your coordination with that.
And I appreciate you getting a hold of the school district because that's, uh, a big deal.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure.
Any other questions from council? Okay, well, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. All right, moving on to a public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President and Council Members. My name is Amanda Asker, and I work in the Community and Economic Development, um, Department, and I am here tonight to, uh, do a public hearing for a street vacation, um, located on Meadow Avenue. This is the third public hearing on this one, so if it seems familiar, it probably is. Um, we've been working on this one for a while, the other ones have expired, so we're bringing it back again for another public hearing. So, it is located in the Kennydale area. It is a vacant, um, street, uh, right off of, uh, the, kind of the tail end of North Thirty-Eighth Street, right next to Meadow, and in between Wash Dodd, uh, the 405 right-of-way. Um, it's approximately fifty feet wide, a hundred and thirty feet long. Um, I had a really good picture that didn't come over with me, but it, um, basically is a, uh, just an open area that people have been parking and other items have been parked there for a while. Uh, hasn't been used for a long time. So, the petition, this petition was received November twenty-eighth, um, it is an extension from a vacation that started in two thousand and six, was re, uh, restarted again in two thousand and fifteen, that one expired, so we're bringing it back in two thousand and eighteen. So, we have, a hundred percent of the owners have signed the petition. The right-of-way was originally dedicated in nineteen oh four, has never been opened, um, especially now with the four oh five, uh, interstate behind it, it kinda goes nowhere. Uh, there are no city-owned facilities in the requested area either. The request was, um, brought forward due to the, uh, potential of future development on the adjoining properties. And especially with the extension of four oh five on the other side, there's really no way a road would jump over to the other side, so we're good there. The vacation request was circulated again to all of the city departments and outside agencies, there were no objections raised, um, by any department, and Wash Dodd, Comcast, Century Link, and PSC all responded with no objections to the, to the request either. So, CED would recommend, um, that we would recommend that the council approve the request to vacate, uh, the property. As this is the third time we're bringing this here, uh, the appraisal was completed previously for the second request, but it had been turned in and submitted after the, um, expiration date, so we do have the appraisal value, uh, from the petitioner on this compensation, if, or for the compensation, if the council chooses to move forward, um, we can do so very quickly as we've already gone through that process. So, the compensation will be set by the Utilities Committee, and then, once that has been set, then we would, um, once it's received, the fees have been paid, then we would move with the ordinance to vacate. And that is all.
Thanks, Amanda. Any questions from council? Yes, Mr. Person.
Uh, just one question, is it, since this is the third time that we've gone through this process for the vacation, is there, can we tell the guy he doesn't get a fourth shot? I mean, this, this takes staff time and, and it just, you know, either you buy it or you don't. I mean, I, that's the way I look at it, so...
This is the first time that he actually did submit and follow through with getting an appraisal, so we did make further progress on this one, and that is one of the reasons, uh, I actually have approached the Utilities Committee with a compensation value, to basically just set the timeframe, get it done, uh, to move forward.
I mean, that's my only, I, I think it's, I know this particular piece of property, it needs to be vacated, that's not the issue, but the issue is, we have, our staff has so much other stuff to do than to keep reviving it.
Any correspondence?
Uh, no correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this is a, um, a public meeting in regards to the street vacation, was there anybody who wanted to testify on this item? Okay, any further questions for Amanda? Okay, thank you, Amanda, what's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Witchy, second by Mr. McGurven, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And I know we have further action later on. So, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington?
Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, really just one item, uh, of business to report, I know most of you are aware of this, um, as you know, uh, last Wednesday we had, um, uh, a sinkhole appear on Rainier Avenue North, um, just towards the north end of, of town. Uh, we'd actually had that, uh, storm line scheduled for some, um, uh, maintenance, and, um, uh, Mother Nature sort of helped the process along. Anyway, I think, um, it was a very significant project, I wanted to just mention in particular, uh, not only our public work staff, but, um, Northwest Construction. Our crews worked literally around the clock for three days, it was a significant, uh, sinkhole, um, unstable soil conditions, we really had to work, it was a thirty-six inch, uh, stormwater, uh, line that had to be replaced, and it was very deep in the ground, so you have to set up the appropriate, uh, 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 safety precautions and trench, trenching, uh, apparatus to try to get us there. Anyway, um, if, I think, uh, we had folks from almost every department, uh, heavily involved in making it a priority to make sure that it went well. Um, but, um, the good news is, uh, our police department sort of noticed something irregular with the street, immediately notified us before, um, the, the hole could've actually, um, opened up, and then we would've potentially had a vehicle fall into it, so, uh, we were able to open up by Friday afternoon. I think, uh, just want the council to know, uh, that, um, your, uh, your maintenance folks and folks from CED, uh, Police Department, and, uh, uh, as well as Northwest Construction did an outstanding job. The, we have a number of other, uh, traffic projects, uh, throughout town, none of them are as exciting as this, and so we just want people to pay attention as we drive by those construction projects. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is audience co- audience, uh, comments, and we have one person sign up to address the council. Please give your name, city of residence, or record, you have five minutes, Dr. Zimmerman.
I'm, uh, Dr. David Paul Zimmerman from Renton Preparatory Christian School. We're located in the two-hundred-mill building, so I wanna thank you for what you just did tonight. Most people don't really know what Renton Prep does, we're kinda quiet, but I wanted to share with you what's happened over the last two years with Renton Prep. I wanna update you because as we began to work with this, with Cosmos approached us, they were not aware of what we did, and said, "Was the city aware of what you do?" I said, "Possibly." There are twenty-seven Microsoft showcase schools in the United States, we own two of those campuses, and they're considered by Microsoft, Renton Prep, to be one of the most premier campuses in the world. As a result, our ethnic diversity is forty percent Asian in thirteen countries, forty, twenty-two percent African from thirteen, or six countries, and African-American, twenty-four percent from mixed ethnic groups representing twenty countries, ten percent Caucasian, two percent Hispanic. Eighty percent of our students are first or second generation immigrants. They're students of color who should not be doing what they're doing, at least that's what we're told when they travel around. Contrary to popular belief, because we're an unashamedly conservative Christian school, Microsoft and other corporations will not provide any funding whatsoever to us, even though we enroll students who are Buddhist, Hindi, Muslim, Jewish, and yes, even agnostic. Our belief is to be truly Christian, our students must learn to live and work together in the world and not be secluded apart from the world, but learn to maintain their faith traditions while learning, respecting, and appreciating others, even as they confess their Christian faith. In the past two years, government and educational representatives from eighteen countries have visited the city of Renton when they came to visit Renton Prep. In January two thousand and eighteen, government officials and educational leaders from Croatia, New Zealand, South Africa, and this last Friday of January, twenty-three national educator leaders from Taiwan spent the day on the Renton Prep campus. The global Microsoft Minecraft team of twenty-six world experts spent a day on our campus last week, while six teachers, three students, I'm sorry, six students and three teachers flew to Florida to present their research on technology integration in the classroom. These students were from grades four through ninth. Starting this Wednesday at the largest technology conference of the Northwest held in downtown Seattle at the Convention Center, NCC E two thousand and eighteen, twelve teachers and eighteen students were leading workshops about technology integration. Croatia was given a hundred million dollars by the European Union to integrate technology in their schools, they came to Renton Prep. And during that visit, we were asked to train over a hundred teachers who would travel to Renton and spend up towards a month in intensive training at Renton Prep, learning its pedagogy, which includes research in K-12 with artificial intelligence, machine learning, virtual mixed reality, as it impacts students as young as four. The Croatian delegation wanted to know if there was housing, we brought them over to the new Hyatt. We currently have over six hundred international students from thirty-six nations waiting to enroll, many of whom have families who would more than, be more than willing to lease some of the units that Cosmos is proposing. Our school is now led by one of the world's most knowledgeable researchers in our type of educational pedagogy, with countries who are traveling to and learning from Renton Prep, hoping that what we have created in downtown Renton can be created around the world. Cosmos embraced Renton Prep, sees us as an integral part of what they have proposed to develop at the two-hundred-mill site. We don't talk a lot about what we do and who we are, but I wanted to thank you, especially the mayor, for believing in us and allowing us to lease space in that building. We anticipate more countries sending their educational delegations, and now even government officials, to Renton to experience and learn from the students at Renton Prep the best practices that will bring about global education transformation. My hope is eventually, as the team from Taiwan asked us, were there any government officials to greet them, which is, we've learned that's more and more common, as these countries send, uh, what's equivalent to secretaries of education from their countries. And so, I would love to be able to let someone know in the council that someone's arriving from Croatia and New Zealand. It's usually a five or ten-minute greeting, they exchange gifts, uh, and we haven't done that, and after, after the last visit from Taiwan, and they had all these things set up to give, and it was, uh, fa- upon my fault, I wasn't...
Just, uh, just, just notify our office, we'd be happy to pass it along.
Wonderful. Uh, and I'm open for any questions, just wanted you to bring up to date of what we do, we don't do a lot of stuff, uh, in, kind of, our website does everything.
I appreciate that. So, any questions from council? I know some people understand your, uh, facility intimately, so, um...
Yes.
So, anyway, well, thanks, Dr. ...
The fire departments have learned how to, uh, get children out of trapped in elevators.
Yeah.
Two experiences.
Yeah.
The last thing I would like to ask, and Mayor, you had sent us a letter about this, uh, now that Cosmos has come on board, uh, we are completely out of space, we've brought in people to look at how we can manage space. We're never going to be a huge school, our, our limit is three hundred and fifty students, and there's a reason for that, because of how we move quickly with technology. Uh, but we're completely out of space, and I had approached the mayor about leasing more space at the time the building was gonna go up. I, I would like to ask if there is any available space without cost to you, knowing that we're gonna be working with Cosmos, if we have any available space that we can lease from you, we would like to take responsibility for it, you know, set up a lease. I know there are some spaces available, um, we're just out of space right now, Microsoft would like to put a team here, as, Microsoft would probably put a team onsite, which they've been wanting to do for a year now, uh, because we've worked so closely with them. Uh, Cosmos is probably gonna give them some space so they can bring teams from around the world to spend a month or several weeks with us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. ...
Yeah, is, as part of Cosmos's proposal, they, they addressed this, they, they had knowledge that you were looking for more space, and I think, um, I think that there should just be dialogue on, you know, short-term need versus long-term need, and, and I think they're already working on a plan, I, my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to consent agenda, we have six items for council consideration, are there any items that council more like pulled for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item D.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Uh, I'd like to approve Consent Agenda as published minus item D. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. McGurven, that council approve the Consent Agenda minus item D, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person?
Mr. Mayor, I, I pulled item D because I think this is one of the most important decisions that this council is going to be making in a long time. I said, as we all know, and the public knows, Jay is gonna retire after almost twenty-eight years on the May, on May first, and part of the council's job is to confirm, uh, any new hire in, in a department head position, and we have one here tonight, uh, Mr. Bob Harrison, who the mayor has appointed as his, uh, CEO, CAO, Chief Administrative Officer. And I, I just think it's important that the public knows, uh, how happy we are that he's here, and, uh, we're, we're looking forward to continuation. I don't wanna shove Jay out the door yet.
He doesn't have his potato gloves on yet.
It's nice to know that the replacement is in, in place, and I congratulate you, Mayor, and, and your staff, because a lot of places wouldn't be this far aggressive in getting somebody aboard, uh, ahead of time. So, I don't know if anybody wants to, Mr. Harrison wants to stand up and let...
Yeah, Clay, we'll have to, have to turn the camera around, there he is. Um, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have a proper public announcement coming out this week, and so, um, but thank you, Mr. Person, appreciate that very much. Also appreciate, um, council member Prince and Carolyn Witchy and Ryan McGurven for sitting on the interview panels along with department heads, and so we're very pleased that Bob will be joining our staff. So, we're, we'll need if, it sounded like an affirmative.
You need a motion now, right.
Yes, we will.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I move that the council concur in the appointment of Bob Harrison as a Chief Administrative Officer of the city.
Second.
And...
He wasn't done.
And instruct the city to, or authorize the city to enter an, into an employment agreement with it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, and council concur with item D, with the hiring of Bob Harrison as our new Chief Administrative Officer. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, that's May first, so I am gonna stick around for a little while, unless you guys decide differently.
That's...
Just let me know.
As I've told you, it's day by day, so... All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the committee of the whole has a committee report.
Okay, committed the whole, uh, committee report regarding the two-hundred-mill proposals. The committee of the whole recommends concurrence in the recommendation of the two-hundred-mill RFP Review Committee to authorize the city administration to commence negotiations with Cosmos Development Group for the redevelopment of the city-owned parcels at two-hundred-mill Avenue South, signed by the, uh, council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the council concur in the, uh, the committee of the whole committee report. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, and council concur with the committee of the whole report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman?
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Witchy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has one committee report.
Okay, Utilities Committee Committee Report, Compensation Determination for Tasked Street Vacation. Uh, this is option A of, uh, the two ordinances. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to accept the appraisal and set compensation for street vacation petition, uh, VAC one-five-dash-zero-zero-one at thirteen thousand dollars for an approximately sixty-five hundred square foot portion of land located south of thirty-eight oh four Meadow Avenue North. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to waive the initial fees for street vacation due to previous expiration period on the vacation request. Additionally, the Utilities Committee recommends the ordinance regarding this matter be prepared and presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witchy.
I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Utilities Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Witchy, second by Mr. McGurven, that council concur with the Utilities Committee report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That is all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Finance Committee has a couple reports.
All right, the first Finance Committee report is regarding vouchers. Uh, the Finance Committee approves the following payments, uh, one, accounts payable, total payment of thirteen million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars even for vouchers one zero zero four eight through one zero zero six zero, and, uh, uh, three six three one five four through three six three one five six, three six three one five nine through three six three one six one, three six three one seven five through three six three four four three, and payroll benefit withholding vouchers five seven thirty through five seven four zero, and three six three one six two through three six three one seven four, and eight wire transfers, and then payroll and a total payment of one million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, eighty-one dollars and twenty-two cents for payroll vouchers, which include six hundred and eleven direct deposits and forty-two checks, which are for the January first through fifteen, two thousand and eight pay period. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Well, the vouchers included, uh... Well, the vouchers included, this time, just a couple smaller things, but our gas, gas and diesel bill for a month was thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. And we had to pay rent for the crossings at Coulon Park for the year, and that was four thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and ninety cents to Burlington Northern. You think, you'd think they'd let us cross for free. Then we did tire recycling for a hundred and fourteen tires for two hundred dollars, two hundred and one dollars. And the thing that got my attention bigger than anything is there was a bill for nine-hundred and forty-seven dollars from the street department for Energite barrels, and there was two barrels for nine-hundred and forty-seven dollars. Those are those big orange barrels full of sand that you see in front of a, in Buckman, so people don't get hurt if they run, run into them. Those babies are expensive, so if you see anybody run into them, please report it so we can bill them. With that, Mr. Mayor, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the next Finance Committee report is regarding the capital project coordinator position. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize converting the budgeted limited-term capital project coordinator position to a full-time position. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
This is money that we've already have in the budget, so there isn't a budget impact on it. With that, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next committee report from the Finance Committee is the Reed Middleton contract for structural and nonstructural plan review. Reed Middleton has provided structural and nonstructural plan review services verifying compliance to Renton City Code requirements. The amount of reviews they conduct for the city of Renton has varied, based primarily on the level of projects being presented to the city, and also fluctuates with the level of city plan review employees on staff. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the consultant contract in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars with Reed Middleton to review structural and nonstructural plans submitted to the city of Renton, signed by the chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Reed Middleton has been doing this work for the city for about twenty years, and we only use them on a, as need basis, so while they can spend up, we're authorizing up to a hundred thousand dollars in expenditure, it's, we'll only use what is, what is necessary. And the nice part about it is, is the people that need the permit pay for it, so with that, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the last Finance Committee report is regarding the Arroyos Carport fee waiver. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to waive the application fee for a setback variance for Juan Pablo and Esperanza Arroyos due to economic hardship. In addition, the committee recommends that the Arroyos pay the applicable building permit fee rather than a double fee that is applied to permits with co-compliance violations. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I want to thank our planning department on this, this carport waiver. There was, there was some confusion on the owner's part, you know, confusion about what the permit was required, and he was actually just replacing in the exact same place that was allowed by the county in the past, and we were able to reduce the fees and penalties, and so they're, the neighbors are very pleased with them, they're doing a very nice job, and so anyway, it was a good, a good deal by staff, and thanks for approving that. Okay, moving on to legislation, resolution.
Okay, the resolution's regarding the emergency proclamation for the failed storm system. Resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, declaring an emergency for the purposes of replacing a failed storm system at Rainier Avenue North.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witche.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Witche, second by Mr. Corman, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The first ordinance is for first reading, it's option A on the agenda, it's regarding the Taskah Street Vacation Compensation at thirteen thousand dollars. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, vacating a portion of North Thirty-Eighth Street between Meadow Avenue North and I-405, James Taskah petitioner, VAC fifteen-zero-zero-one, project twenty-five-zero-zero-six-four.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witche.
I move that the ordinance, option A, be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Witche, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance, which is option A, be moved to second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And we have one ordinance for second and final reading, it's regarding the Airport Advisory Committee membership. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending section two-seventeen-two of the Renton Municipal Code, adding one voting member from the Benson Hill neighborhood to the Airport Advisory Committee, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. McGurven, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and it requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witche?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a number of items to, for new business. On Thursday and Friday, February, Thursday and Friday, February fifteenth and sixteenth, the council will be holding its annual council retreat from eight-thirty to five P.M. at Maplewood Greens in the Cedar Room. On Monday, February nineteenth, there are no meetings, it's council holiday for President's Day. And on Monday, February twenty-sixth, the committee of the whole will convene in the Conference Center. There are two items on the agenda, safe and healthy housing recommendation and Renton River Days funding alternatives, and that will be happening at five-thirty. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of Councilmember Pavoni, I'm just going to announce that the Public Safety Committee meeting that would have been held on February twenty-sixth has been canceled, and that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no new business.
Okay, Mr. McGurven?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just need to announce that the Planning and Development Committee, originally scheduled for Thursday, February twenty-second, has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Witche?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, February twenty-second has also been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Person?
Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee meeting on February twenty, Monday, February twenty-sixth at five P.M. in the council conference room, vouchers and emerging issues in revenue streams will be the two topics. And also, Mr. Mayor, as we, as staff compiles the total cost for that Rainier Avenue closure and, it'd be nice if we could have a report on that.
Okay, we'll make sure you get that.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. What's the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, Mr. Person, Ms. Witche, that we adjourn? All those in favor say aye.
I didn't say aye.